Good evening. I will call the February council meeting to order. Thank you, Alderpersons, for being here this evening. Alderperson Worrell is excused. Thank you to those city staff and those joining in the audience, as well as those joining us from the comfort of their home, or wherever they might be watching tonight's meeting. Item number two is roll call, which you've dispensed of. Item number three, I invite you to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a silent prayer in lieu of invocation. Amen. Item number four is the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting. See attachment number one. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding the minutes of the previous meeting?
Move to approve and place on file.
We have a motion, and motion by Stack, second by Kirkpatrick. All in favor? Opposed? I should have asked if there were any additions or corrections. Seeing none, no opposition. Item number five is explanation of the visitor speaking procedure here this evening. Members of the audience may address the body after being recognized by a member of the council, in which you'll be invited to the podium, and in which case they can yield their time for five minutes. Please introduce yourself when you do come to the podium for the record. Item number six on our agenda is my report. Good evening, Alderpersons, city staff, and residents here or watching from home. As with previous reports, I will highlight some of the many items that cross my desk, or I partake in following the last city council meeting. This month, I had the opportunity to welcome a number of visitors to City Hall, in which I will, in future months, indicate. This is the first month of recognizing who's been in and out of this room. Shane and I have the pleasure of welcoming, and so does the Police Department, many, many, many visitors to City Hall throughout the month. This month, we had students from the Creative Community Living Services, who came to visit during their government and public service unit. It was a great pleasure to speak with them about city functions and opportunities for involvement, many of which worked at ODC during their work opportunities. So it was great to have them here at City Hall. City Clerk and I, and members of the Police Department, welcomed second graders from Washington School a few Fridays ago. The second graders split, as many do, their tour between public safety and government, and it was an excellent experience to expose visitors like second graders to the legislative process. Shane puts them through a great exercise where they get to vote. This month was ice cream, their favorite ice cream. So Shane taught them how to use the, how to vote, and use ballots, and the whole process there. Last month, we formally kicked off the Mayor's Youth Council. I am pleased that both Cody and Nick has been, have been involved in that, as well as city staff and members of the public in the advisory role. So now, two meetings in, we continue to, in many ways, be impressed, I think, by the level of engagement that we've gone to draw students in at this point. The Youth Council is in the process of forming three subcommittees around legislation, community, and recreation, and over the next month, anticipate the legislative group of youth. From that council will work to provide, work with the city attorney to draft legislation for your consideration, to provide the framework for how the Youth Council might work with the common council moving forward, especially Alderperson Kellogg, city clerk, Chief of Police Hoyer, all serving in different capacities within the Mayor's Youth Council. We do have nearly thirty students that have been attending and participating in that so far. Earlier this month, I gave my third annual State of the City address, in which we had an excellent turnout, both in person and those watching from home and YouTube, to learn about our accomplishments and what we've done over 2014, and to hear a vision for 2015. Now, I'd like to thank all the city staff who were on hand to meet with the public prior to the remarks. Heard many compliments from members of the public, indicating that they were pleased that city staff were available and approachable at that event. I'd also like to thank many of you who were able to attend the event, and really, your attendance, I think, at this, and even such as Mayor's councils, like the Youth Council and others, helped solidify a willingness to the public that all of us are working together to further community efforts for the betterment of our city. This year's address was centered around the idea of what makes a healthy community. Spoke about economic health, where I highlighted significant projects from 2014 that will surely have an economic impact. And more central to city-led efforts, I spoke of how my administration has taken a look at our past planning and begin to act in areas where the timing and market conditions make sense. Spoke about how housing will be a cornerstone to any city development, particularly the role housing plays in creating demand for surrounding economic development, as well as a critical role it plays in attraction and retention of talent. And the people, as we know, the ability for our area to attract talent and retain talent is critical to the success of our businesses today and those of tomorrow. Also shared how we're supportive of business growth through the use of technology, like the newly launched and now live GrowRapids.com. Also spoke of organizational health, where we highlighted various tech advancements we've made here as a city in 2014, and announced some new ones for 2015. One of which we launched, See Click Fix, which serves as an online reporting and tracking of neighborhood and infrastructure issues. And I'm proud to report that we're seeing increasing use of that application, and highly encourage anyone that hasn't downloaded the app on their smartphone, or checked it out on the web to do so. We're achieving good usage of that so far. Finally, we spoke about civic health, and highlighted the accomplishments we've seen in 2014 through resident engagement. From cleaning up neighborhoods, to planting trees and hanging flower baskets on light poles that add a breadth of color in the summer months, residents have stepped forward to really take ownership in beautifying our city, to make a wonderful impression on those living here or visiting. There will be many opportunities in the near future for resident involvement in these areas, as well as equally impactful efforts around our city. For anyone who missed the remarks, you can view the entire event online by visiting the city's website, or RCCA Media's website, on their YouTube channel. We are getting very close to the formal kickoff of the Mayor's Council on Sustainability. As has been mentioned, this launch marks another step in our journey toward helping Wisconsin Rapids nurture and conserve its resources, for the benefit of residents and visitors today, and for generations to come. Next Thursday, February 24th, at 4:30 PM, we'll be meeting at the library, where the vision and the scope of the Sustainability Council will be formally introduced. Additionally, participants will learn about current sustainability efforts in our city, and how the newly formed council can support those efforts in moving Wisconsin Rapids forward as a model for progress in achieving sustainable growth. Proclamations issued since the last month was United 2-1-1 Day, in which that service gives our local citizens a way to identify and access available services, ranging from childcare to affordable housing to food or crisis counseling. February 11th was recognized as 2-1-1 Day in the city, to bring attention to the valuable services that 2-1-1 provides our residents. School Choice Week, recognizing that Wisconsin Rapids has many high-quality teaching professionals in traditional public schools, public charter schools, and private schools, who are all committed to educating our children, I proclaim the week of January 25th, School Choice Week, to help raise awareness of the need for effective quality educational options that challenge and motivate all students to succeed. And as always, I hope that you find a little bit of value in the sampling of what my weeks consist of. As a reminder, I encourage you to subscribe to the community update online, and if you're not online, to catch variations recorded on RCCA Media, or request a print version from my office. Next item on our agenda this evening is item number seven, a scheduled public hearing and resolution on the vacation of part of Oak Street lying west of State Highway 54, which attachments are, in your packets are numbers two and three. With that, I will open the public hearing. Okay, so it's the first, Part Two and Part Three. There's some others indicating the attachments. So the first page of attachment number two is the parcel map, parcel A, B, and C. This is property located north of Oak Street, adjacent to State Highway 54, which is being vacated. And that resolution is also attached as item number three in your packet. Anyone wishing to speak on the public hearing, first time, anyone wishing to speak on the public hearing for the second time, and anyone wishing to speak on the public hearing for the third time? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and entertain a motion on the resolution that's attached. Alderperson Kirkpatrick, please.
Thank you. Make a motion to approve the resolution and packet as presented.
Have a motion to approve by Kirkpatrick. Is there a second? Second by Alderperson Furkey. Any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Seven As and zero Ns.
Item number eight is standing council committee reports. Item A is the Finance and Property Committee meeting held February 3rd and February 17th. Alderperson Stack.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening to those present and those at home. The Finance and Property Committee met at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, February 3rd, in the first-floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present, except Chad Worrell. Also attending were Tim DeSorci, Scott Kellogg, Andrew Kirkpatrick, Joe Eichstedt, Dave Kirkman, Mayor Ruwink, Tom Raume, Joshua, and Cheryl Vetrone, and Karen Madden from the Daily Tribune. Item one, the meeting was called to order. Item two, a renewal application for a second-hand article dealer license filed by ECO ATM Incorporated, doing business as ECO ATM, for the premises at 555 West Grand Avenue. This, in effect, is a standalone kiosk device. Motion by Stack, second by Dolan, to renew the ECO ATM license. Motion carried. Item three, an application for a Class B liquor and beer license filed by Johnny's LLC, Joshua Vetrone, agent, doing business as Johnny's, for the premises at 2610 A Street South. Joshua and Cheryl Vetrone were present for this item. Motion by Dolan, second by Stack, to approve the license. Item four, a request from Fire Chief Dave Kirkman to review and approve bids for the replacement of CV1 Old Utility III, which is known as the Fire Chief's vehicle. Motion was made by Stack, seconded by Dolan, to approve purchasing a 2015 Explorer from Rapids Ford, the only bidder, for $28,877.44, plus tax, title, and license. The chief had gone to other vendors, but Ford was the only one who replied. Item five, apply for a stewardship grant and transportation alternatives grant to help fund the East Riverbank Trail. Motion is made by Stack, seconded by Dolan, to approve applying for the grant to help fund the East Riverbank Trail from Daly Avenue to East Grand Avenue. Total project cost is estimated to be as high as $900,000. The motion carried. Item six, pursue a request for proposals for the potential hiring of landscape architect, planner, for the design of riverfront enhancements. Motion by Stack, seconded by Dolan, to pursue the potential hiring of an architect planner for the design of riverfront enhancements from Daly Avenue to the north city limits. There are no cost estimates at this time. Motion carried. And again, this is a request for proposals. Item seven, review and approve applying for the Wisconsin DNR's Urban Nonpoint Source and Stormwater Management Grant. Motion by Stack, seconded by Dolan, to approve the following resolution and to apply for the grant. The grant funds seventy percent of eligible costs up to $85,000. The modeling update for the city is estimated to cost between $60,000 and $80,000. Motion carried. Resolution is below. Item eight, pardon me. Consider approval of a payment in lieu of taxes agreement with WRMSP LLC for the apartments known as Chula Vista, 1200 Huntington Avenue. This WRMSP purchased the Chula Vista property in October of 2014. Motion by Dolan, seconded by Stack, to approve a payment of $15,000 in lieu of taxes agreement from WRMSP for the Chula Vista apartments. Motion carried. Item nine, consider approval of a contact, contract with Pyrotechnic Display Incorporated for the city's 2015 fireworks display. Motion by Stack, seconded by Dolan, to approve a one-year contract with Pyrotechnic Display for the 2015 fireworks display. Motion carried. Item 10, a 2014 revenue appropriation resolution. Motion by Stack, seconded by Dolan, to approve the following 2014 revenue appropriation resolution. Motion carried. Item 11. Item 11, beverage operator license applications. Motion by Stack, seconded by Dolan, to approve new licenses for the following applicants listed. Motion carried. Move by Stack, seconded by Dolan, to renew a, item 11B, move by Stack, seconded by Dolan, to renew a license for Jeremy Jezduski. Motion carried. Item C, there were no beverage licenses that were denied by the Police Department. Item 12, audit of the bills. Motion by Stack, seconded by Dolan, to approve the audit of bills, voucher number 58047 through 58445. Motion carried. Item 13A, an open session, it was moved by Dolan, seconded by Stack, to go into closed session under Section 19.85, Paren 1, Paren E, of the Wisconsin statutes. Motion carried. 13B, in closed session, the committee discussed the status of negotiations regarding the purchase by the city of real estate parcels of the downtown area. Item 14, the committee adjourned in closed session at 6:30 PM. James Stack, chairperson, Terry Dolan, secretary. Now, the Finance Committee met this evening, beginning at 5:00 PM, here in the first-floor conference room. All members were present, except Alderman Worrell, who was excused. Also attending were Jim Borsky, Matt Heidemann, Todd Furkey, Andrew Kirkpatrick, Tim DeSorci, Sue Schill, Craig Dobbs, and Dave Battin. Item one, the meeting was called to order. Item two, discussion and action on the city's hail damage insurance claim, and a proposed process for hail damage repairs. It was moved by Stack, seconded by Dolan, to select a general contractor for scope of the work, a Finance and Property interview them, materials to be purchased locally when possible, and that subcontractors be hired to perform the work from the area. The contract with the general contractor will list all subcontractors and timelines, and when work will be performed. Motion carried. See attachment one. Item three, discussion and possible action on room tax, economic development funds, including potential purchase of an ad in a Wisconsin edition of Site Selector Magazine. It is moved by Dolan, seconded by Stack, to approve purchasing a two-page ad in a Wisconsin edition of Site Selector Magazine, not exceeding $10,450. Motion carried. The meeting adjourned at 5:48 PM. James Stack, chairperson, Terry Dolan, secretary. Your Honor, I move for adoption of these two reports.
We had a motion to approve by Alderperson Stack, seconded by Alderperson Furkey. Moving to discussion on the reports. Alderperson Raume, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I wasn't at the meeting. Could there just be a brief synopsis, I guess?
Sure.
How many, how many people are going to be getting this, Jim, and that, or whoever wants to answer?
The, the magazine?
Yeah.
Yeah. The purpose of the magazine is to promote the community. It'll go to both people in and outside the community. One of the interesting, interesting concepts is that it is presented to others who might be interested in building sites, or areas to place a business, or they have a need for additional, they want to expand their business, or start a new business. The mayor indicated to us this is probably from medium to large-sized businesses. What we can do is, in a sense, we're selling. We're proposing to people outside our area that Wisconsin Rapids is a place for them, for they and their business, and that we have the community that they need to come to. And, I don't know if the mayor finished.
Yeah, there were a couple of examples that were just shared. We didn't have them at the meeting, so if there's others that want to see them, they're coming around. As Jim had alluded to, the, it's a state-specific addition that the state is producing, and so they've offered cities and economic development entities to participate. We don't really have an economic development entity that's to a point where they can put an ad in, so that's why the city is considering it, I think is probably the best way to put it. In future years, should the state do another addition, it's, it's probably worthwhile to guess that the economic development entity would fund it at that point, but because there's nothing else, I mean, the chamber doesn't have the resources specifically to do it. So that was really where the, the ad idea came from. Any other discussion? One friendly amendment maybe to the minutes on that would be where the dollars were going to come from, so including a note from room, the room tax allocation. If somebody wants to make that, or offer that friendly amendment in there, and...
I knew that the dollars for the expense come from the room tax.
Okay. And Alderperson Furkey, you agree to that in your second? Okay, great. Thank you. We'll get that in there. Alderperson Kirkpatrick, you're next.
Thank you. Evening of the third, on, on number one there. Item number nine was considering the Pyrotechnic Display. I was just curious, had we talked with, you know, Pyrotechnic Display, Inc., regarding our potential proposal as coming out of the council, or, and, you know, if we have, what's their response been?
You mean, just having it be a one-year contract, or?
Correct.
Right.
Because they were proposing the three, and we weren't quite comfortable with that.
Oh, no, they're, they are absolutely fine with that, and will do whatever's necessary, and if we need to kind of amend the shoot zone somewhat, or whatever, but they would certainly be interested if we, in, in continuing, but I told them that more than likely, we would probably put it out for bids next, or this coming fall.
Thank you.
We're still taking open suggestions for songs for the soundtrack, though, so I would make that note. A little bit too early to be thinking of, of songs for the fireworks, but folks that have a strong opinion about what songs should be included will take those suggestions. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Seven As and zero Ns.
Item number eight, letter B, Public Works Committee meeting held February 3rd. Alderperson Raume, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Works Committee met at 6:00 PM on February 3rd, 2015, in the first-floor conference room in City Hall. All members were present. Also attending were Alderperson Todd Furkey, Joe Eichstedt, and Nick Dooms. A list of others present is not filed in the Clerk's office. Item one was to call the meeting to order. Item two, review and possibly approve the draft policy governing riverbank maintenance. There's a motion as second to approve, to accept the riverbank vegetation maintenance policy, and that motion carried. Number three is review and approve County Materials Corporation unit price extension for concrete materials through December 31, 2015. There's a motion as second to approve the 2015 unit price extension for concrete materials, and that motion carried. Item four, review and approve the Wisconsin DOT Project 6999-07-18, negotiated three-party design contract for the 8th Street South and East Grand Avenue intersection modification project. There's a motion as second to approve the three-party design contract as presented, and that motion carried. Item five, review and approve the annual professional services agreement with MSA Professional Services for performing stormwater-related services. There is a motion as second to approve the professional services agreement with MSA Professional Services, and that motion carried. Item six, review the proposed 2015 Public Works project schedule. We reviewed the schedule. Item seven, to review the referral list. Items 2014, number 17, and year 2015, items two, three, and four can be removed. There is a motion as second, item eight, there's a motion as second to adjourn. The motion carried. The meeting adjourned at 7:25 PM. And with that, Your Honor, I move for adoption of the report.
We have a motion to approve by Alderperson Raume, seconded by Alderperson Kirkpatrick. Moving to discussion. Any discussion on the report? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Seven As and zero Ns.
Item eight, C, tonight is the Human Resources Committee meeting held February 3rd. Alderperson Furkey, are you reading the report?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you want the, the February 3rd Human Resources Committee met at 4:00 on Tuesday, in the third-floor conference room at City Hall? All members were present, including Beth Bukinowits, Tim DeSorci, and Sue Schill. A list of others are unfiled to the City Clerk's office. Alderman Worrell called the meeting to order at 4:00. Item two, we discussed a community care paramedic program trial. The community care paramedic program was discussed. And item three, the committee discussed the health insurance plan designed for the Protective Service employees for 2016. Motion was made by Worrell, seconded by Furkey, to hold this item over for more information, yet motion carried. Item four, 4A. An open session, a motion was made by HEP, and seconded by Worrell, to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, Pair E, Pair 1, Pair E. Roll call, roll call vote was taken, with all voting in the affirmative. Motion carried. Item B, in closed session, as noted above, the committee discussed collective bargaining negotiation strategy regarding implementation of the community care paramedic program trial. C, motion was made by Worrell, seconded by Furkey, to return to open session. Motion carried. Item five, consider the approval of the community care paramedic program trial and a side letter agreement with the IAFF regarding the same. A motion was made by HEP, seconded by Furkey, to approve the community care paramedic program trial for a minimum of six months for fifty selected patients, pending an agreement with Riverview Hospital that meets with the city's city attorney's approval. Riverview Hospital will provide training to our employees at no charge. Riverview Healthcare Foundation will reimburse the city for any cost of the trial, including a stipend paid to the employees for training. That motion carried. A motion was made by HEP, seconded by Furkey, to approve a side letter agreement with Local 425 regarding the community care... by Furkey, to approve a side-letter agreement with Local 425 regarding the community care paramedic program trial. Motion carried. And C, attachment one. Item six, review and approve the city accountant job description and job evaluation. A motion was made by Furkey, seconded by Whirl, to approve the job description as presented and the job evaluation. Pay grade at 12, with those limits of $57,535 to $65,097. That motion carried. And item seven, consider the approval to, of a request to hire an IT consultant. A motion was made by HEP, seconded by Whirl, to approve the request to hire an IT consultant. That motion carried. A motion was made by HEP, seconded by Whirl, to adjourn. That motion carried. Meeting adjourned at 6:35 PM. With that, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion to approve by Furkey, seconded by Alder Person Dolan. Move into discussion. Alder Person Raum, you're first.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess it was in the paper tonight about the community care paramedic program trial, and I'm just, and so people who got the paper got, were able to read it. I was just wondering, do you have anything to add, Scott, to what was in there, or enlighten us more?
No, we're just excited that it was approved and look forward to more of a feasibility study to see if it's sustainable, and, you know, how the pilot program works, and we're excited to get it moving forward.
Did you have anything? Okay. Alder Person Kellogg, you're next.
I had a few calls with regard to this, too, and one resident mentioned, will it be additional cost after trial's over? And I suspect it will be successful. It looks pretty good. But will it be additional cost, more personnel, or overtime as a result of this?
Quite the opposite. We're looking, as our run volume goes up, we're looking to try to schedule appointments with these patients that use the 911 service a lot. So we'd be going to their house on a scheduled appointment instead of them using the 911 service, kind of as their primary healthcare system. So they're using 911, they're using the emergency room. So what we're looking to is using on-duty personnel at a scheduled visit. There will be no additional personnel. We're hoping to drive down run volume, overtime, and the program itself will not, there will be no overtime caused by the program.
I just have a question, too. How will it be evaluated? What are the standards, or what will you be looking at to determine if it's success?
Right now, to me, the biggest success, it's a win for the community. It's kind of a community wellness program, but if we're going to measure if it's successful, period we went with the high-frequency user, people that use the 911 service four or more times, was from October 1st, 2012, through September 30th, 2013. We had 104 patients that used the 911 service four or more times. So my thought, how we can measure if it's successful, is if maybe we can drop that 104 people and maybe drop it 5%, 10% is, you know, off the top of my head. We're going to be meeting with the hospital and trying to find other ways to measure success with the program.
I have a suggestion, and I'd like to see some type of record as to what you found. In other words, each case, there might be one where you dealt with medicine, one you found that the smoke detector wasn't working, one that you gave suggestions of putting, you worried about rugs or what have you for senior citizens. So at least we have an idea of some of the things you're finding as part of your evaluation. And then the other part of that, though, too, is I'm always concerned about liability. If you go into a person's home and you don't suggest something, let's say, as senior citizens, they're recommending that you put a bar in the shower, and that's not recommended, and the person a month later breaks their hip by slipping in the shower, are we liable? So I guess I'd like to have you look into the liability and that person receiving some document, so they can't say, well, you didn't tell me I should have done that, or it's just hearsay, and we might be liable as a result of that. So I'm not sure if that could be a problem, and maybe Sue could talk to it, because I guess I have a concern with regard to that.
I did talk with our insurer just to, you know, make sure that they were okay with this, and we are, you know, our employees continue to be covered to the extent that they always have. They don't necessarily see this as outside the scope of their duties that they already have immunity for and protections for. So there was no concern at all from their, they were concerned the way that in the future, that our, the protections that the city receives towards employees for things like this might go away or be lessened. So that's certainly something to look for. I think the court, the courts tend to, are leaning towards taking away some of the protections we have as far as liability and immunity for some of our actions. I'm talking about city employees, so, but as of this time, there's no additional liability as a result of this program.
It's good to hear, because there's so many suits nowadays, and you just never know. So I appreciate it.
Alder Person Stack, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. Has this been trialed in other communities, and did they give you some feedback on what has occurred in other communities? Is this new to Wisconsin, new to the Midwest? What's the history of it? Was it presented to you?
There's been two trial programs in the state. I don't believe they're ongoing right now. Green Bay was shut down for a little bit, and there was a ruling, and they're going to be looking to start and back up the program. And the other one was in Baraboo. So we don't have a lot of in-state resources we can go to, but throughout the country, it's becoming the trend of, you know, just community wellness, patient care, trying to keep them healthier, and utilizing the 911 service appropriately, using, utilizing the emergency rooms appropriately. What you're seeing is the population ages and underinsured and no-insured people, they're using the service as their primary healthcare, and we're not discouraging people from using 911, but trying to educate them and the appropriateness of 911 and using the emergency room. We've targeted certain patients through our software and with Riverview that we're going to target in the pilot program, congestive heart failure, COPD, diabetics, you know, pretty minor stuff, and like Scott, Sue told Scott, we are operating totally in our scope of practice. We need no additional certification or license or through the state to do what we're doing. So I am going to a conference in Maryland next week, and part of it is a, first day's an advanced community care workshop, and in it, it talks about programs that have been successful and programs that have failed throughout the nation, and I think that'll be very, very beneficial to bring back and try to get our program in line with the successful programs.
Okay, thank you.
Alder Person Kirkpatrick, you're next.
Thank you. And so we've already identified some of these patients that we're going to work with?
Like I said, through October of 2012 through September of 2013, we used, with the hospital, we came up with what's a high-frequency user and four or more is what we came up with.
Okay.
And not all 104 of them would be viable candidates for this program, but some of them are. So, you know, obviously, the patients got to agree to the program. We're not just showing up at their house, so, and coming into their house. So they, they're going to be identified through the hospital. It'll be a doctor referral, and then we'll schedule an appointment with the patient.
Okay. And I guess this is not a question for you so much, but that evening, and I had to kind of, I jumped out of the meeting there, but it seemed like there was a lot of questions. I think, Mayor, you were kind of spearheading some of the discussion on this one regarding future cost of the city, or if there was going to be a revenue stream generated to the city to offset the cost of the program. And I know there was, there was a back and forth regarding, you know, the cost benefit to the city of a healthy population, which there obviously is, and kind of paired against the cost-benefit analysis of constrained city budgets, and how do we continue to provide the current services at the level that we have? And is that, is this feasible to add on top of that and still maintain those service levels? So I was just curious if any of those questions had been, you know, more flushed out in ongoing discussions, if we're any closer to answering some of those questions, or if we're still got ways to work through between, between, you know, the hospital organization and ourselves.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked the question. I did receive some correspondence from a member of the fire union, and I'm pleased that we did get some answers in terms of evaluation. And I think the attorney, as she works through the actual agreement that will have to be executed with Riverview on the subject, you know, some of those things can be built in there for ongoing evaluation, specific to, are we meeting outcomes? Are we moving the needle, as it were, regarding all of these things, so we can all come back and say, yeah, this has been a success, and we want to continue it? As it relates to the question, I think, that you raised about, you know, additional strain on resources, right? And I think something that you all have raised through the budget process is the ongoing issue of increasing overtime costs. And I think Scott handled it very well, in the sense that the idea or the intent is to curb overtime costs, reduce them where appropriate. So that's an ongoing discussion. I'll put that right on the table. It's an ongoing discussion, and I think it supersedes just the discussion here tonight. But, you know, I'm glad you raised it, something we're going to have to keep our eyes on. As we all know, the dollars that we spend in this program, if there are additional costs to the city, you know, we got to be aware of them. I think Riverview has been pretty open to addressing those things as they come up and through the pilot, and I think as we move forward through it, we'll learn what we don't know today. So as it relates to the other concerns, I believe they've all been addressed, particularly pertaining to the evaluation criteria of the program. So, but, you know, I would also include overtime on the table as one of those items that we've got to keep our eye on. You know, if we don't pay attention to it, of course, it's going to continue to spiral out of control. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, we, it sounds like we're kind of still, we're working through it, but we're still kind of at that same point where
Right.
we don't have a lot of answers.
We don't know what we don't know.
So this is going to help to flush it out. Okay, I'm good with that. Thanks.
Alder Person Furkey, you're next.
What was discussed a lot, somewhat at, quite at length? We have citizens that are using the 911 service, as Scott has mentioned, some of them in the double digits per year, and using the, you know, four or five personnel for nosebleed. With this program, if we can head off some of those calls, and those calls will be from 8:00 to 5:00, or 8:00 to 4:30, someone who is regularly scheduled to work, if there is a, an emergency call, they will have a radio, they will come off that home visit and respond to the call. They will also be last out of the firehouse to do their regular scheduled visits. Also, what was discussed, too, was to monitor the, these individuals that are selected. They were selected because of their frequency of their calls and some of their other physical liabilities and conditions, and we wanted to monitor when those calls were made in the past to the 911 service. Were they made at 3:00 in the afternoon? Were they made at noon? Or were they, you know, generated off hours, say? So we're going to be able to track some of the savings by the calls that were regularly coming after hours that now maybe could be corrected or accomplished during the 8:00 to 5:00 regular scheduled visits.
Thank you.
Alder Person Stack, you're next.
Thank you. I see some folks here from the hospital. They like to address the council on this program and what they see benefiting them from it, you know? One of the things that's running through the back of my mind is, if this is something the hospital likes to take, would want to take part in, I don't disagree with that. But could the hospital, from their perspective, provide the service, and not necessarily the city and the paramedic staff? That's something that comes to mind as we're sitting here talking about this. Is there another way to address this concern? Does the hospital have anything to add?
Right. When you've got it on, it's green.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm Peggy O.C., I'm Vice President of Patient Services and Chief Nursing Officer at Riverview Hospital, and we've been working on this program for about a year, and we're very, very, very supportive of it. Actually, Dave called me about, I think it was last January 2013, and approached the subject and asked if I had heard of such a program, and I had been reading about it, and using the personnel, the paramedic personnel that we have already trained, is actually the most cost-effective way to do this. We would certainly consider funding it through the hospital if this doesn't work out, but they're highly trained, they're used to being in people's homes, they're trusted by individuals, they already have the skill set that's needed, so there's no training that's necessary. So to use lesser-skilled individuals that we would have to train, we'd probably have a worse outcome. So we think this is really the way to go, and this is the way other communities have gone as well. There are programs in Nebraska, Minnesota. Some of the folks that we're working with from the fire department are going to various conferences, and in every single one of those conferences, this is one of the topics.
Okay, thank you. That's what I was looking at, is we're, you know, to get staff to the home from the hospital or from the paramedic from the city. So, thank you.
Alder Person Raum, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. One more. How many people will be left at the station? I guess how many are at the station, and what number would there be?
It would be anywhere from eight to 10. We're looking at only six members being trained. One member would be going to the home at a time, so they'd be using a staff vehicle, not an ambulance. Ambulance is one of the downfalls on the program, ambulance showing up in the neighborhood, drawing attention to the house. So we'd be using a staff vehicle with one member. They would stay towards staffing if we got busy or had multiple calls going on. They could leave from the patient, and we'd reschedule the home visit. So it'll have no impact on staffing.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Alder Person Stack, please.
Thank you. In your discussions that you had, did you have a anticipated activity level, how many people might be seen within a week, within the eight-hour period that you spoke of earlier? Is that anything I can back them up yet?
It's unknown. The pilot program is for 50 patients. The 50 patients, we may see more than once. It may take two, three times to get our objective or our goal that we're trying to accomplish with them. But it's 50 patients, and there's no set timeframe. We need this many per week. It's going to be driven by the patients and a referring physician.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Alder Person Kirkpatrick, please.
Thank you. I'll ask real quick if everybody's kind of done with the, because I want to move on to a different item number.
On that subject, did the HR director have anything to weigh in on that? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Make sure.
Okay, thanks. I just want to make sure I'm not jumping past somebody here. Item seven, considering approval of the request to hire an IT consultant. I was just curious what we, this is not going to be a city employee, this is going to be contracted out, accurate?
I would defer to the HR director for an entire answer, but the bottom line is there'd be a real small scope of work for this individual, and
And that was kind of the other question, was what's the work objective here for this individual?
The next step will be to put together an RFP for this, and ultimately, it will have to go to finance for final approval. But really, just to get us started with assessing our needs here at the city, and possibly recommending vendors. So that's what we're looking for.
Okay. Do we have, we don't have a dollar amount set yet at this time?
Not yet.
No? Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on the report? Seeing none, please cast your, the motion is to approve, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried.
Motion carried, seven As and zero As.
Item nine this evening is miscellaneous reports. Item A, the Southwood County Airport Commission meetings held January fifteenth and February fifth. Item B is McMillan Memorial Library Board of Trustees, held December seventeenth. Item C, the Police and Fire Commission meeting, held January fourteenth. Item D, the City Treasurers Report on Investments for December. Item E, the Wastewater Treatment Commission, held February fourth. Item F, the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department Organizational Summary for January. Item G, the Monthly Report for the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department for January. Item H, the Wisconsin Rapids Water Works and Lighting Commission, held January fourteenth. Item L, the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department's Fourth Quarterly Report for 2014. And item J, the Housing Authority, held December eighteen. Councilmembers, what are your wishes regarding those reports?
Move to approve, place on file.
A motion by Kirkpatrick to approve, seconded by Alderperson Dolan. Discussion on the reports. Alderperson Kirkpatrick, please, you're first.
Thank you. Jim, can I pick your brain? Sure. The January fourteenth meeting, item three point three, the restructuring, could you speak to that to some degree? What, you're not gonna go forward with it, but I mean, what?
It was the ATC?
Yeah.
If you could come forward, Jim, on that subject.
Maybe just a little kinda history clarity and why we came to the decision that, that you ultimately came to?
Is it on? Yes.
As long as you got the green light, we can hear you.
Okay. Yes, ATC, and this is being driven by the transmission owner in Wisconsin and the U.P., which is American Transmission Company. Their Board of Directors probably decided, it's almost been a year ago now, that they were going to form a holding company and invest in transmission outside of their current footprint, in the MISO or in other operating transmission systems. So a lot of study was undertaken. At this point in time, the ATC investment, just within its current footprint, is a very good investment for the utility. It earns a large return compared to anything we could, we could get in the bank at this point in time. But there were too many, so each owner of ATC had to make a decision if they were gonna stay within the current footprint and just invest in projects within the state of Wisconsin and the Upper Peninsula or also participate in their outside investments in transmission. So just knowing the risks that's involved with building transmission. Now, yes, a lot of them are, are FERC-approved, greater returns, but there's a lot of upfront costs that is involved in the bidding and the engineering and the, and the right-of-way and all those things, and approval of it by regulatory approval. So, and the size of some of those investments. We were made aware about a year and a half ago that they were actually bidding on the Entergy Transmission System, which is New Orleans, Mississippi, and that area. And that type of transaction would have went, I think it sold for four and a half billion dollars, which we could never afford those type of capital calls with our ownership percentage. And by our very structure, we're not allowed to borrow money for those type of investments as well. So that was the other big reason why all the municipals in the state that are owners of ATC, I think there are about thirty-five of us of the eighty-two munis that are part of ATC, have opted to just stay with inside the current footprint. So right now, all the agreements are putting, being put together by the attorneys to isolate the current footprint from what investments may go on outside to protect our investment here in Wisconsin in the U.P. So that's kind of it in a nutshell.
Okay. Was that kinda like glue that we're a part of? Is that similar?
Great Lakes Utilities, well, actually, no, that's our power supplier.
Okay.
ATC is the transmission owner in the state. The MISO is the operator of the transmission system. So this was an ATC, basically, it was driven by the investor-owned utilities because they're making a lot of money off ATC right now and they see that they can make money outside the state by building transmission. So it was mainly driven by the, the, the investment-owned utilities that are on the ATC board. They're the ones that's driving this train.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Further discussion on the reports? I would indicate one note on the Airport Commission. Gotta find my packet here. There is some discussion, we actually received notice from the state regarding our airport layout plan, that we will need to do some additional tree removals off airport property. It's very exciting. None of us are going to be too thrilled about going about it. But I will keep you all informed as to that process as it goes forward. But we don't want airplanes on people's front yards, we're gonna have to do something about the intrusions of, of space. So I assure that as just a FYI to all of you. No action has been taken specific to that yet. With that, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven As and zero As.
Item ten, items for new business at the March seventeenth council, not seeing anything under there. Item eleven, referral of communications to committees, are there any? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Kirkpatrick, seconded by Rayom, all in favor? Oppose, thank you all for being here, we stand adjourned.